Welcome to the November 25th Select Board Meeting. If everyone would please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a reminder, if everyone would please silence your cellphones. We appreciate it. We'll start the meeting with public hearings. We have a public hearing for the acquisition of MAP 223 lot 29 pursuant to our say 4114A, the land acquisition. Anything from the board?
This is our first or second public hearing? Second, second. Good thinking.
And then I will open it up. Does the public have anything?
No.
All right. Then I will close the public hearing for the acquisition of MAP 223 lot 29 and open the public hearing for the acquisition of a portion of MAP 223 lot 26, also known as the part of the future town hall. Anything from the board? Anything from the board there? Nothing. I'll open it for public comment.
Dear folks, Paul Moss, Cellar 83, Washington Street. Is the town paying any fee at all other than tax stamps? And are we doing any deed restrictions on these, both these parcels?
So the town is exempt from tax stamps for property transfers. The town won't be paying any transfer. There's a statute that requires a payment to be made typically be a dollar for the acquisition of both lots pursuant to the law.
Warranty deeds?
Correct.
The one lot had a penalty on there. Is there any, has that been settled?
So when the Select Board first considered, this was two meetings ago, the acquisition of that lot, they abated the land use change tax and passed due property tax.
Okay. I was on the planning board, I believe, when Mr. Felzoni had, is there a curb cut on lot 22, on substitute? Is that still in play? What was passed, I want to say about three years ago?
So there's a, two separate lots. So lot 22 is a separate triangle lot which has frontage on Substitute Road. And I believe, I'd have to go back and look at the records, but I believe the town supported access to the commercial property through that lot from Substitute Road as long as Substitute Road is brought up to the town standard.
I recall that the Conservation Committee had some concerns about the wetlands in the back and there was a spring there. Is that, not the town hall lot, but the other one, is it going to have any kind of deed restriction, no building, conservation, or is it just going to be?
The town, if authorized, the town intends to accept that lot as is.
Okay.
So there's lot 29 and that there's a triangle, little triangle shaped lot next to it that's lot 22.
Yeah, that's the one that Joe had, he wanted to put a whale or something in there. Did he finish that rug?
It went out, yep. We put it up for auction. He was the only person who bid on it. And then ended up, we did a lot of all the paperwork and then it just never processed all the way through somewhere in the, right before the transition of town administrators. And then just sat idle and that was why, part of Joe, why Joe talked about giving it back. We did tell him we would support development of it as well as the development of the entrance way and Substitute Road, but he was not interested in that.
Thank you.
All right. Closing that public comment. Hearing no other public comments and see anybody else on that, so I'm going to close public comment on that. All right. Here with me, looking between, stop it. Moving on under appointments, the 2020 census presentation, Mr. Richard Perrin is going to make it.
That would be me.
And so we have 15 minutes.
That's all.
Yes, sir. That's what I had out, Katie.
I'm absolutely cheating, not so worried.
All right.
This one doesn't have HD lines.
Oh, okay, we're in trouble.
So if you, we can have, I can pull it up on the computer we have. We'll just do a budget presentation over that and then, yeah, fantastic.
I have it open if you want me to plug in.
Do you have it open?
I do.
Oh, you. This guy.
Do you have it?
Yeah.
But I can do it.
It's, I don't know. You apologize a little, folks.
It's the PDF. Yours doesn't have UGA.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, they don't have enough to go around, but extra copies that you folks can share, if they would like to look at, if somebody would look at it. It's being presented.
Do you want to use the microphone up front?
I need something to.
Yeah, I'm happy to scroll through it for you.
All right. I'll say good evening, folks. Thank you very much for having me in. My name is Richard Perrin, P-E-R-R-I-N. I'm from Gloucester and I'm the Party Specialist for the 2020 United States Census. As most of you know, the census is coming up next year. And the Census Bureau is the largest, excuse me, the largest statistical agency in the U.S. We do every 10 years, it's important census, but there are 130 other surveys going on at any one time. Back right as we speak, there's about five or six that are going on right now. There's a regional census, decennial American housing survey, business, economic. We do, we do quite a bit. Next, please. One more, please. Now, the survey awareness is what we're in the process of doing right now, excuse me. Four major points. First off, there are people that conduct the survey. If there's anybody conducting the survey that does not belong with the census, if they're asking you for money, any kind of donations, that's a no-no. We have a fraud number right there that if you suspect any kind of fraud of anybody, you call that number and we'll take care of it. They should have a special ID, they should have information available, and they should have a password. So there shouldn't be any kind of problem with dealing with somebody that's on the up and up. We are in the process, next, of counting everyone. Everyone? Next, please.
Sure.
We're going to count everyone once in the right place and make sure that we're getting total, accurate, and complete count. Now, the reason for this is we want to count everybody because it's the funding. Number one is the money. It really comes down to the funding. Everybody that deals in any kind of funding, whatsoever, schools, businesses, after-school program, roads, bridges, lunch programs, SNAP, Medicare, everybody depends on funding. There's $675 billion out there with a B that's going to be allocated to the states, the cities, and the towns, right down to the local level. The census, oh, I'm sorry, the census, by the way, was put in the beginning of the Constitution by our forefathers right up front, I go on, because they thought it was very, very important to do. This will be the 23rd census, it started in 1790, again, the 23rd coming up next year. If we violate any kind of the information that we get, we can face up to a $250,000 fine and/or five years in jail, and quite frankly, I can afford neither. So I don't think many people can. We'll move on to the next one, please. Again, there's $675 billion out there, we mentioned that already. The census is safe. It's a, private information is never, never given out. People have tried with lawsuits over the years, they've tried to get into the information, no can do. And we have to make sure we carry the highest and biggest cyber security that you can imagine. Just to get on that computer right there, I have to have four passwords and they're all at least 15 characters long. So I have a lot to remember to even get into my computer. If I walk away, just when I walk out the door, it would shut off if I wasn't in the middle of doing what I'm doing right here. So the information is definitely safe. On to the next one, please, if you want. It's very safe, it's very easy. There are three ways, three, three ways to proceed to finish the survey. When they send you the information beginning of March, you can do the old paper ballot, which has been around since the beginning. This will be the first year that people can telephone the information in, or they can use the computer online. So if, the libraries have been very, very helpful to us, senior centers, things like that, it's very, very good. Oh, by the way, I'm sorry, I should have told you, the information's in the back of your folder on the right-hand side, I heard. So it's very safe. Again, there are three ways to do it. If they don't do those three ways, that's when somebody will come knocking on the door. We call those folks enumerators and we kind of, in the back way, we kind of call them the door knockers, because that's what they do. So once you self-respond, your family self-responds, your commitment for the, for the census is over. They'll send you a reminder postcard, they'll send you a letter if you're not able to, and then when they knock on the door, hopefully they'll get the information. And yes, quite frankly, there were the ones that we miss and people that just won't do it. And we just have to kind of go, we missed them. So a lot of folks speak different languages. Manchester, New Hampshire, for example, has over 100 different languages. And there's an example of the 12 that we could use that you can touch on phone. You can call somebody and they will get to those 12 languages on, on the phone. Those 12 are part of 59 different languages that are available. So if you happen to speak Haitian Creole, we'll take care of you, no problem. But there are other people who do dialects and other languages, that's why the census is looking for people that are bilingual. If you speak a different language, they make any difference if it's Spanish, German, Korean, whatever, they probably can get your help. Now, what we're going to be asking here is this committee will become what we call the trusted voice. These folks will be spreading the word on the census, because obviously you know them, you know townspeople more than you do me. So they want, we want these folks to be the ones that are going to spread the word why the census is so important. It's money, it's safety, it's jobs. Next point. Oh, by the way, the languages are listed right here. And the next point, there we go, one more down. And the information that I mentioned already, coming through the, the beginning of March, middle of March, and the information will, soon as you get it, you can self-respond and you're done. So it's going to be going until the end of May. At that particular point, the census will conclude somewhere in the vicinity of the end of September, and we have to get the information to the office of the government by the end of the year, by law. First quarter of 2020, that's when the money will be distributed. Other things that will be happening with the census information is congressional districting. Hopefully we'll continue to have two representatives in New Hampshire. Other states may lose some, depending on the shift in the population. Also voting precincts, so the information really does go out to many, many different sources. So the Complete Count Committee is a way that you folks can join and be partners. Anybody can be on it. Fire department, police department, schools, hospitals, anybody can be a Complete Count Committee, you folks can do it right here. Now, devoted very, very little time to this. You come in, how's the census doing, get the word out, put the information on your website, newsletters. You folks that have private businesses, same thing, you can put information, literature in your business, so people can see that it's going to be happening. Right now, we're in the educational phase, and we'll get to the awareness phase starting in January. You'll see a lot of publicity out there, billboards, newspapers, radio, TV. This is the first year in 20 that we've had a political campaign going on at the same time. So there's going to be a lot of information. One, you're going to turn this way, you're going to see so-and-so running for lot, then turn this way and you're going to ask, people are going to be asking you to fill out the census. Once the middle of February rolls around and the first election, New Hampshire's gone, this is still very, very important to continue. Again, it'll be April 1st. I suggested a number of years ago, there should be April 4th days, and they, they took my suggestion, they liked that. Now, we count everybody. Everybody, people ask, what about the people in nursing homes? Yes, hospitals, hotels, they even count the people in jail and in prison. And there's a good chance that they're probably going to know how many people are in the jail. If the numbers don't match, they know something wrong. They count homeless. We go out in March and there's crews that actually go out in two or three pairs, put the coats on with the flashlights, and we hunt for homeless people. The partners that we've established throughout the years know where these soup kitchens are, know where the places that people live in the cave, under the bridge, and yes, they really do, and we go out and count them because they are just as important. And yes, we count people that have not become citizens, people that are here illegally. Yes, they get counted. Now, people have asked, why don't you just take a voting register and count that way? Well, there's this many on the town. There are people that are under the age of 18, there are people that will not vote. Why don't you do a cellphone blast, why don't you do an email blast? How many spam phone calls do you get in a week? How many email spams do you get in a week? So they found out that mailing it and going through this process is the most, most efficient and cost-effective way. Now, the next step is we can support you, we can support the partners by any kind of information. Logos, newsletters, drop-in information, we can take care of that, anything that you'd like, we can provide it for you. You can go on to your website, it's listed right there, and get it yourself. If you have a newsletter, you have a church bulletin, put something in your company paycheck, fine, anywhere that you can get the information out there is very, very important. Next big thing is called a Rome, the last point. Right now, you can go on anywhere in the country, if you have any kind of computer, it's not, it's not private, everybody has a public computer, you can go on this Rome and check out these statistical, statistical data anywhere in the country. You can do it in any, any way, shape, or form. How many homeless, how many Hispanics, how many people are in poverty, how many people earn an extra amount of dollars. And on the next page, we picked Manchester because simply because it's the biggest city in the state. The big part about Rome is when the census starts, in the middle of March, you can actually go on there day by day and see in real time how these people are responding in your area. So if your Complete Count Committee needs a little help, you can go over to the folks over in a certain area, say, hey, listen, you folks are not responding, we really need your help. So that's, as I say, it's in real time and it happens when the census survey starts. So finally, there's data dissemination. Again, it's going to be information that you have, you can go online and get it, I can provide it to you, not a problem. And I didn't really actually mention it, I kind of skipped by rather quickly, the census is looking to hire 13,000 people here in New Hampshire. So there are lots of jobs. And it isn't just people that go knocking on the doors. There's data dissemination, there's clerks, there are field supervisors, there are people that handle the data at home. Train is included, you'll be paid for that. Mileage is included, it's 58 cents a mile. And right now, they just adjusted it, it's up to 17.50 an hour to start. And supervisors make more. It's almost as much as Mr. Nat makes. Not quite. It's quick, I can see the names. That's my time. So hopefully on the next, the last page, right down, one more. We'll all have a very, very sunny day. Everybody will have a sunny disposition when the census is all done, all the numbers will, will match up, the funding will be complete, and everybody will be prim and happy. One more page on the end. You can contact us through these sites, the census site, census.gov/jobs, or you can take care of any of the other ones on Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, you name it, they'll look at you there. Obviously, Mr. McGeever and Mr. Pittenap will have my information if you need to get that. You can also, they'll be happy to give you my name and phone number and email. It's also in the, under those folders, that's not the card right there. It's some information on census jobs, some things that you can take along with you and post wherever you like, information on confidentiality and information on why we ask and who we ask. So all comes down to money, safety, security, and lastly but not least, you feel pretty good when you're doing it. It's like voting. Once you set that information, it's just, hey, I'm part of a team, I'm part of the information, this funding may help. Any questions? Ma'am.
Of the 13,000 positions that they will be hiring for, will specific members of that hiring group be able to work either from home or in a place?
Yes. Once you get in there, there's a circle that you can, there's up to five or six positions you can ask for. And once you're in there, you're in this, you're in the entire bunch, you don't have to reapply for another one.
So some of our current New Hampshire residents that are experiencing homelessness, this would be a very good opportunity for them to be able to work while being housed in place.
You do have to be over 18. I see, and you two don't qualify, you're probably right about there. You do have to pass a background check.
Okay.
So that's the, those are the really two.
So criminal background check and over the age of 18.
That's correct.
Very good. Thank you.
And they will ask you for your fingerprints. That's the, you know, they're again, it's cyber security, that's the way they have to, have to check everybody.
Mr. Mayor? Out of that 13,000, how many will be receiving or do you have an offer of dollars for a partner?
We're hoping to hire as many as we can. To answer that question and give you a real figure would be tough to do. So I mean, they're hoping to hire that many. They may not get to that point, and depending upon your situation in life, if you're a retired person, you can work a few hours a week, you can work up to 40 hours a week.
No, I rephrased my question.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Of the 13,000, is all of them going to be paid in our only way?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's correct. And paid training and mileage. Yes, ma'am.
And the period of time that they're expected to be working in this role is how many months?
They're hiring now, they're hoping to hire, hire in January, February, and it should go depending upon what their job, end of summer. My tenure ends in September.
Very good, thank you.
And again, please, if anybody's asking for money, and anybody's asking you for a payment for this information, we can, we can get it free. I have to collect $20 from everybody, I hope that's it.
Don't hold it.
Just hope you're there, right? I'm teasing. All set? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Perrin.
I have one coming up here now. I have another one coming up here in the form of 10/97. Great, we just completed up to last week, so I tried to go as much as I could and be honest.
Next on the appointments, is the Recreation Commission appointment for Mr. Doug Langdon, who I do not see here with us.
Correct.
All right. So there will be no swearing in, assuming?
No, no swearing in, but in action if the board supports appointing him as a full member of the commission for three years.
Do I have a motion?
I would make that motion. I've sat with Doug through many meetings and he's very level-headed and provides.
Second. Roll call, vote.
Aye or aye?
Aye.
Hinge aye?
Hinge aye. And moving into budget presentation. Steve.
Yes. Do we have a special guest here tonight?
I don't know.
Do you need any action done tonight?
What I was going to say, is he here working on his badge for citizenship?
Excellent.
It's awesome. Would you like to come up and introduce yourself to the microphone and tell us what you're?
No pressure. No? All right. Figure we give you the opportunity.
We're glad to have you here, thanks for coming. Welcome.
All right, so budget presentation, tax.
So Linda Markowitz is here to present the tax budget for you. You have updated materials in your packet, and it's also section 21 of the Budget Binder for anybody following on home. And the deputy tax collector is here as well, Peyton Goodell, in the back room.
Do you want to go get it?
No, it's her.
He's out of town.
He said he's been bringing it.
Again, I've tried to break down each line item, what we have spent, actually, pretty close to what we have spent this year. A few line items we went over. The contract with our mortgagee search company did go up a little per search, so that did go a little over and I've allowed for it in the new budget for next year. Office equipment, equipment rental, the copier, and also the equipment, regular equipment. I kept it at a dollar just to keep the line items open. I don't foresee any more equipment needed, and thank you for allowing the tax office to purchase that copier. It is awesome. It's not huge, but it's perfect for the office. It's, it's really nice. The printing went up a little bit this year as well, just, we have a few more tax bills go out. They're still only charging us 26 per piece, and the postage on, is like 26 cents, I believe. So we're saving money there as well. Conferences and training went up. This year, our, the deputy went to the annual conference, and I have some extra training I'd like her to take this coming year, Government Accounting Certification Program. We are trying to train her to take over my position when I, I'm hoping, when I retire. And I also need to go to recertification this year, it's been five years. The dues and fees, I believe, are the same. The registry of deeds went up a little. I mean, when we, when I do the leaning, I never know how many I'm going to be doing, and they all have to be recorded. And then the monthly redemptions, they vary every month depending who pays off their loans. The mileage also went up because of the deputy going to the annual conference, and I've added in more for that certification program for her travel back and forth, I believe it's in Congress. Office supplies, we kept it the same. And postage, I've dropped down $1,000. We have been able to keep it under the, under six, and last year it was for seven. So I, I felt good about dropping it down a thousand because you gave me that beautiful And that's it. Anybody have any questions? I have such a short budget, it's very funny.
And now that she's done, we can point out, point out the delicious homemade cookies that she made for the Select Board's enjoyment, now that it's not considered bribery.
And anybody have any questions? No questions. I did want to mention that you had given me permission to apply for the Moose Plate Grant. I applied for $10,000. They had an awful lot of applicants, so they did grant me enough money to get one of the historic tax ledgers preserved to get me on my way. And in future conversations, I would like to talk to you about possibly funding the other two to get done. Or we could put it in a warrant article to start a reserve fund for future ledgers and also other town historic books to be re-preserved. But, so the, they've sent us a check for 80%. So it was, I asked for $10,000, it was, they gave me $3,007.05, which is the price, the cost of the first book getting preserved. And they've sent us 80%, and they'll send us the rest when the book is done.
Can we apply next year for the same grant, potentially?
I'm not clear on that. I mean, I'm going to check with the State Library. I believe you can. It's a lot of work, it's, you know, but I believe you can.
Okay.
So that's another option.
I would also assume that now that you've, you've done it once, there's some, I'm saying, paste, but...
Well, I've saved the pic, the photo, all the photos, and yeah, I won't get rid of them.
It could or it could not, it really depends on what they started.
Yeah, I'm not going to have to rewrite the whole thing, it could be a copy paste. I could. But it's worth a try.
Yeah, thank you.
Great, thank you.
That's it.
Thank you, Linda.
You're welcome.
Now let's break out those cookies.
Yeah.
At the budget.
Yeah. I was expecting something from the 10,000 mile road trip, but...
Town Clerk, go which?
So Kim Carracus, your elected Town Clerk, will be presenting the budget for the Town Clerk in elections this year. The Select Board does have updated materials in their packet, and it's section 22 of the Budget Binder. Specifically, the updated materials that you have show the updated numbers for staffing, a reduction of what was originally proposed, so that's the 11 by 17. a reduction of what was originally proposed, so that's the eleven by seventeen.
So I let Linda go first, so the cookies are really from both of us. I like all the work, but, you know.
That's awesome.
So the main thrust of my budget is that the positions have changed. I initially was going a different way and through someone retiring, I changed. I'm gonna keep the two full-time and the two part-time. Eventually, I do want to make the two-part-time a full-time, probably down the road in a year or two. It's just depending, I'm trying to help someone transition out and hopefully get someone in that I can train that'll take over. That's my goal. And there's really nothing else pressing, I feel, on the town budget. I know for the equipment, I did put something in to try to address when we move to the new town hall, but I've also wanted the DMV printers that I talked about. That's just a regular replacement because the old printers are no longer supported by DMV. So if they have an issue, I need to replace them. I'm trying to be proactive and replace them out. Is there any other questions, specifically on any lines for me, for the town?
So we're going back to full-time, from part-time back to?
Nope, nope. I wanted to try to go. In a couple of years, my goal is to get to a full-time position. In June, if Camille had not retired, I was gonna do it in June. But now, as it stands, I'm just gonna keep the two-part-time and the two-full-time for the whole year, for 2020. So it's a decrease in what I was proposing initially.
Can you clarify, so eventually, will it be four, full-time?
Three. Eventually. Right now, I have two-part-time and two-full-time.
Right, so this is, I'm not sure.
Oh, no, I'm talking, I'm talking a couple of years out. It's a goal in mine. I'd like to change the two twenty-hour positions to be one full-time position. So it'll be three total people, including me as a full-time.
And then change Fergens up for the new town hall?
That's somewhat in my proposed budget, because Connor had said to try to put something in there and those are things that I feel I'm gonna need at the new town hall. So, to my best guess.
And Kim, could you just describe to the board and the ABC the impact of the number of elections next year on the election portion of your budget?
Well, there are four. And it's a presidential primary, which we do have the date, February eleventh, thank goodness, they set that. And then we have the general in November and then there's a primary in September. So that's three more elections and the presidential primary and the state general, which is for the president, is going to be extremely busy. So that's why the increase in budget for staff, for printing and coding. And if you want to switch to election, is there anything else you wanted to reference on that? Because I did want to do an increase to the, one of the election lines for printing. If you can remember, this past year, we had to photocopy ballots. I don't want to have to do that again. So I'm gonna try to gauge and go even more because we can't do that again. And that's why I'm really, I'd rather overexpend and have more ballots that I have to just dispose of eventually, but we can't go through that again. That was painful. Most of you were there, so I appreciate your help, but that was painful.
Other questions from the board?
So the exact increase, do you want me to say I'm, I'd like to increase, it is the printing coding budget line and the last four digits are four, five, five, zero. I'd like to increase that by five hundred dollars, so it would bring it to seven thousand eight hundred. That line is also used for coding of the memory cards for the AccuVote machines. So I have to pay for the state coding of the memory cards, not the ballots, but I have to pay for the coding. And then there's the coding for the town election and the ballots for the town election. So I just want to make sure I'm covering all my bases for that.
It's going to two thousand dollars.
I'm sorry?
Seven thousand eight hundred.
It's a five hundred dollar increase.
Sorry. Seventy-eight hundred.
It went from seventy-three hundred to seventy-eight. Dan?
This, the update rate, does it sign the update?
No, that shows seventy-three or what does that show?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three, I want to make that in.
Increase by five hundred.
This is breaking news, Dan, as of tonight.
I've decided. Because I don't think I really calculated enough and I don't want to have the photocopy issue.
I understand where you're coming from.
Thank you, thank you. Peter? Oh, sorry.
In your reply to the ABC comment about the AccuVote machines, when they're serviced, do they get any software upgrade or is that just service?
It's servicing. I had the clock replaced recently, fifty dollars. It's just, I don't know that there's really any software update. It's just that I have them serviced every year and they just serviced them a couple of months ago. So they do it every single year. I have three machines now, which I did not have at the last presidential, so that should help us quite a bit. And I'm gonna be running all three, of course, so. But it's just, eventually, the Secretary of State will approve another machine. We only have that one right now and I would love to be able to upgrade once they do. Because this machine is not made anymore, but LHS supports it fabulously. They have great support. So if they ever switch, I'd like to hope we could stay with LHS because they do a great job. I've had to call them for issues and they've always been there, so I'd like to stay with LHS if we can. And they're New Hampshire-based now.
Yeah, from my personal observation, standing there all day, I certainly think they're reliable. I don't have any question about that, but they are fairly old, aren't they, at this point?
Yes, I provided Connor, I don't know if he had passed it along, it's a sheet that lists the three machines and when they were obtained. One goes back to ninety-seven. Sheila had got it first, she got another one and then I just, in the past two years or so, got another third one.
I was on the board when we got that first one.
I'm sorry?
I was on the board when we got that first one.
Oh, I can't imagine not having it, but.
Any other questions from the Advisory Budget Committee or the Select Board?
Thank you for preparing for a big turnout.
Okay, yes, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Last, under the appointments, is the R.M. Eldridge and Son Funeral Home Proclamation for a Hundred and Eighty Years.
Do you just need a motion?
Yes, just a motion. There's nobody here to be presented with it. Joel Sherburne is planning to attend the event on December fifth to present the proclamation. If there's a motion and approval by the board.
Dan?
Where are they?
They're not in town. They've served Barrington, much prior to Barrington.
They're from, right?
Rochester. So they've served the community, longest funeral, family-owned funeral home in New Hampshire and one of the longest-serving in the United States.
Thank you.
Motion?
Motion to accept, produce, approve the proclamation for Edgely and Son Funeral.
Can't even get it out.
Aye or aye?
Aye.
Hachy.
Harkoff aye.
Naff aye.
Public comment? Remember, public comment is limited to three minutes.
Three minutes, okay. Well, most of it I'm gonna be making up for three years. Back to the budget. I actually pulled the 2016 budget, which was the similar setup with the four elections and the budget numbers were exactly the same for part-time employment at five thousand, still the same. And the seventy-three hundred, obviously, there's a change here of, what, five hundred dollars? My concern is with postage irregularity. She's asking for an extra two fifty from the prior 2016. It was six hundred, she's at eight fifty. The question for the tax collector is, it looks like the postage has been the same pretty much year over year, like at seven thousand, we're only using six thousand. Do we have a postage meter? So we're at fifty cents per mailing currently? Because in 2016, it was forty-seven cents. So we have more taxable properties now?
Were you talking to me?
Which tax collector? Well, I'm just saying some irregularities on the postage and we can go over this later, I can give it to the Budget Committee, but if the postage has gone up, we have more taxable properties, why is that line item really unchanged? But then I see some other irregularities under admin and the TA's budget from 2016 to 2020. I'm seeing a couple thousand dollars difference between 2016, which was actually higher than it is in the 2020 budget, so.
Is there a specific question that you have? Because we don't do a comparative analysis to 2016's budget, but is there a specific question where you're asking?
Well, I could get into some specifics, but I see a lot of the line items on the budgets have changed and we went to a new software program and. Seventeen. I guess it would be a question for the Budget Committee. Those line items that have changed on the numbers, say like the first, you know, eight-digit numbers on the budget, I'm seeing that they have changed to the 2020 budget. Has anybody checked to see if those numbers actually coincide with the new configuration of the budget? I know we have a new town administrator, this was done with the old town administrator, so.
So in the, I'm just pointing the directions of information that might help you. So in the Budget Binder, which is available online, there's expenditures that go back to 2013 and they're all coded, they're corrected for the fact that the coding of account lines changed. And so if you look back linearly back through 2013, those accounts are corrected for the line number changing in 2017 to the new lines. So there's still that depth of information from a budget or expenditure standpoint. But certainly, if you had specific questions or concerns, you could submit them to the Town Hall to be presented to the ABC.
Yeah, I see irregularities on postage in your department as well as the admin's department. And we're talking a couple thousand dollars on postage. And it's higher in 2016 than it is now and the postage has gone up, so that's my concern.
So we're doing a lot electronically. There's a lot that we're doing more efficiently now based on practices and what's available to us. So I think that's a great testament to department heads working more efficiently, doing more with less.
Great, thanks. Any other public comments? Twice, twice, all right. Review minutes, November eighteenth's meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve or accept the November eighteenth, 2019 meeting minutes.
I will second that motion.
Aye or aye?
Aye.
Harkoff aye.
Naff aye.
New business, no staff report, sorry. Administrator McAdams?
Just two quick things. There's a few items on the agenda, which we'll talk about. Property tax bills, a reminder, they went out November twelfth and are due back December sixteenth. Again, we've heard good feedback from residents with the information provided with the tax bill and we've had a lot of questions come into the Town Hall, which we've been able to point people in the direction of updated information and address their questions. Anybody that has questions that approaches, select board members, don't hesitate to either point them in the direction of information that's available or send them to the Town Hall for accurate information and up-to-date information. I do also want to, on behalf of the Fire Chief, thank some surrounding communities that provided mutual aid for an event on Friday. So Lee Durham, Madberry, Nottingham, Somersworth, Dover, Northwood, Stratford, New Fields, New Market, Epping, and Burwick, Maine, all offered assistance to the Barrington Fire Department for an event over the weekend, so thank you to them. Mutual aid's an important aspect of the emergency service that we offer to our communities and that was shown in force and notes will be sent to those communities. Municipal Office Administrator Cottle?
Thank you. For your signature, I have payroll manifest two zero one nine dash ninety-three and two zero one nine ninety-three A for check date eleven twenty-one nineteen, so there will be two. AP manifest two zero one nine ninety-two for period ending eleven twenty nineteen and one deed with no covenants returning property to previous owner following payment of all taxes and fees owed.
All right. Any old business? New business, the three-hundredth anniversary special event insurance waiver. Chief Walker, would you like to come up and? Is this allowed in public comment, three minutes?
It should only be, speaking on behalf of the three-hundredth Anniversary Committee, the town has a policy in which if events outside of the town, such as the fireman's pancake breakfast and things like that, we have to get a general liability insurance and name the town as a joint rider or whatever you call it. Co-insured, thank you. So what the committee is doing is asking, the vast majority of the things we intend to do are gonna be town-related, in historical in nature, probably a parade and stuff like that. So what we're asking is if the board would support waiving the requirement that we buy event insurance. The fire department, when we do the pancake breakfast, it costs us for two days about three hundred bucks. So our concern is that that just puts a little more of a burden on us for fundraising. I wouldn't, I don't anticipate any kind of an event that would involve alcohol, but in the event that we were to partner up with and provide a dance or something like that where alcohol would be served and just due to the giant liability involved in that, we would not request a waiver for that type of event. We would make sure that we were adequately insured. I have no idea if the committee's interested in something like that, but I'm just putting it out there. But I believe the vast majority of the things we're looking to do are gonna have limited liability and so what we're asking is the committee, is if you'll waive that requirement for us.
Select person, Harkoff?
Would it be appropriate, since it is our three-hundredth anniversary, for the town to absorb a small rider on our current policy for this event?
So if the town, if the town supports a waiver like Chief Walker's talking about or sanctioning the events as a town event, they're covered under the insurance we carry anyways.
Very good.
Dan? How bold vendors is?
Vendors, correct me if I'm wrong, but vendors would be required to follow the town policy in which the town requires that they carry their own insurance. So if we were to do a, I don't know, food truck type thing, then yes, they would be required. The only thing I'm asking the way before is the actual, if we're providing the event.
Go ahead, George. You intend to have fireworks?
We do.
Is fireworks gonna need to have a special rider for that because of the possibilities?
Right, we can, certainly, once the specific plans for the events occur, we'll check with Primex, the town's property and liability insurance carrier, for making sure that we have coverage for the specific events and if there is any additional cost, we'll make sure to approach the board for a decision prior to continuing. The, my understanding of the three-hundredth committee is they're planning some sort of events, maybe on a monthly basis, multiple events throughout the year that may be historical in nature and a review back of the town's three hundred years. And so my understanding of the intent is to make sure that those events are covered without a cost of a few hundred dollars per event to the committee, which is operating on donations at this time.
Thank you. Dan? Most of that, I think, we're following the vendors, we, I, insurance is up. If I were to explain, they're gonna have their own group insurance.
Yes, yeah, so the fireworks vendor would have their own insurance, the town would be covered, but I could see that as a type of an event that would require an additional policy. Primex doesn't, won't write. Primex doesn't, won't write that like when the Fire Association does the pancake breakfast, Primex provides a vendor, actually that's out in California, they won't, they won't under, Primex won't write anybody that's not a government entity, so I would, I would expect that probably it would make sense that the 300th Anniversary Committee, when we do fireworks display, should we pull it off, that we would probably just go ahead and write a separate liability for that anyway. What we're looking for is the, you know, the little, if we do a field day or we do cemetery walk or them type of things that are going to be a low impact, we're just asking you guys to cover those for us.
Motion to allow for a special event insurance waiver for the 300th anniversary.
I'll second that. Hardikoff?
Air eye. Hey, Larry.
Hatchet? Hardikoff, eye.
Now, eye.
Thank you.
Electronic timesheet in attendance. Connor, I'll let you...
Great, so at the September 30th meeting, electronic time and attendance was brought up and I'd let you know that the Finance Office was in progress, working on reviewing options available to the town. That review has completed and we're here to recommend Acufund, the town's financial program, offers the functionality for electronic time and attendance, which seamlessly integrates into the town's accounting. Other options were reviewed, but the functionality in connection with our accounting software and the financial impact of the options led us to supporting this one. So there would be a one-time cost upfront of $5,854.25, so that's purchasing the software. We pay a small maintenance fee annually, but the software is purchased and there's some implementation costs rolled into that as well. The annual maintenance cost, so the annual fee for pursuing this option would be $6,748.75. So a major portion of that annual cost is having all of our accounting data hosted. So right now, the, all of our financial data lives on the town servers and they're backed up to the cloud and secure, but the town is solely responsible for the safety and security of that data. Moving to this electronic time and attendance, really what makes the most sense is to have that data hosted, which makes that data accessible off-site. It's hosted in the cloud and they're responsible for the safety and security, much like the, when the Police Department were reviewing options for body cameras and dashboard cameras, the liability of hosting that data on-site is very high and contracting with the company to host that data and letting the safety and security be their responsibility was preferred. So this, moving this direction, like I said, the functionality of the electronic time and attendance turns on basically a web-facing module that would also allow access with hosted data to all of our financial information. It would increase the speed and reliability of the program as well. So certainly an ancillary benefit of moving in this direction, but the annual maintenance cost for the hosted data represents $4,224 of that $6,700. So compared to options that, other options we've pursued and heard presentations on, this is much more cost-effective and, you know, this is the only option that has that added benefit of having data hosted in the cloud and, you know, relinquishing our responsibility for the safety and security. So the proposed timeline, if there was support from the board, was to move, by the end of this year, move the hosted data or move our accounting data to the hosted model off our servers and then, starting in 2020, work department by department to implement the electronic time and attendance to make sure that a, the model that works best for the department is pursued. There's many options to include, you know, folks logging in, folks that sit at a computer to log in, track their time and attendance, just like they do now on an Excel spreadsheet. There's also options for recreation where every employee has a key fob that they just tap in, tap out for that type of volume of employees on a daily basis. There's other options for very basic, either iPad apps or workstations that folks can touch base with at the end of a pay cycle and have their regular schedule pre-populated and allow for edits. So those decisions would be made on a department by department basis to make sure a smooth integration through winter and spring of 2020.
Dan? So is there actually a time machine thing that's identified? Is it by...
That equipment is available. Like I said, I see that working very well for the Recreation Department, so that equipment is not budgeted. So that equipment's about $600 for a department-like recreation that would be using that for their revolving fund staff. If that was an option they were interested in pursuing, that would be paid for at the revolving fund and the employee fobs that they use are $3 apiece and likewise, that would be a cost that would be incurred that way if they were interested in the ease and convenience of that option.
Tracy?
So a few things occurred to me, since I've implemented a few of these in my lifetime. Is this going to allow you paperless pay as well? So that people can log in remotely?
Yes.
They're buying a car, they can see last year's W2 and they can eat, okay, that's fabulous.
Yes.
This is a little high for the number of employees that you have. I would, I would only ask that you go back and talk with the company and see if they would negotiate your first year out on this, based upon working with Prono's Time and Attendance, which is the Cadillac, the best of the best of time and attendance. This is, this is a pretty high based on the number of employees that you have. It's not astronomical, but in comparative to the Cadillac, best of the best, it's pretty high. I would also, if you are going to purchase this, I personally do not feel that any department should be able to opt out of using it, it just makes more work for your staff.
No question.
So if going into this, you know that, for instance, with summer camp employees, that you are going to have 100 of them, I would say, coming out of the gate, that you insist that this is how you will be tracking time and attendance, write your policies for that and not deviate from it in any way. It sounded a little wishy-washy when you said we'll deal with each department. I think if you're going to implement it, you implement it across the board. And the one other thing I will share with you is that staggering it is not always the best course of action. You're sometimes better off training in each department, one super user who becomes very acclimated with it and flick the switch on each department, ready to go. That's just been my experience over the years with up to 1,200 employees at a time, so.
George?
Thank you. Well, I have to agree that we should do it all at one time and I think that everybody should have a reader. I think a reader would be the most accurate way of doing this. In the past, I've used this and allowing people to opt out of their, it's not going to be worthwhile for us because it opens the door for complaints and we really don't have to deal with complaints. So if we just said, this is what we're going to go to and put the readers in and that's what we do. I agree with what Tracy was saying, but I don't think that $600 per reader is a good price. I think we should investigate if we buy one for each department and put it essentially located for that department, we should be able to get them at a better price than $600. Thank you.
I think what you're going to see, George, is most people will log into the system and enjoy their time that way.
So not everybody would have a slider or key?
Hardikoff?
Yeah, that's, thank you, that's the correct word, but I couldn't remember it.
That would probably be geared more to the rec folks where they have such a kind of, what do I word for it, like transient populations who are, it's kind of all over the place.
Yeah, and how would that affect the town garage and the Fire Department? Would they have something, would they all log in or would they use the phone?
And so just to clarify, and I think that's an important point being brought up, Hardikoff, about the implementation and staggering it. Certainly it would be, everybody would be moving, this would be how we are recording time and attendance for all employees. The staggering and working with the departments is to find the best solution, so there are a few different options on how employees would record their time. Certainly we talked about rec with key fobs tapping in, tapping out. Employees that sit at computers can log into a portal where they would also see their historic tax information and time off available to them, things like that. And so it would be easy and seamless for them to record their time that way. Employees in the Highway Department, for example, the, that don't sit in front of the computer on a regular basis, the solution that might be best for them is simply take a retired computer that just runs the web access to this program and at the end of a pay period, they log in, make any adjustments based on their regular schedule, put in any earned time request and move forward. But those decisions are not made. What we did in researching the programs available is making sure that the, that this program and any program we would bring forward had the tools available to find a workable solution for every department. We're confident that that exists with this program and that's where the recommendation came from.
Dan?
I don't understand, I don't see any cost savings if everyone's got to log in. You have a bunch of people, this swipe button's up, that tracks it, except there's less paperwork we have, you said swipe it, so the guide tracks you. But do we have the setup and everyone's got to log in? It's not cheaper, takes time and...
Well, it's, sorry, I'll let you finish and then I'll make my comment.
Well, kind of like TurboCam's setup, that's all, the computer emails up automatic. You don't really do nothing, once you swipe, it's all tracked.
That's not how TurboCam operates either.
Oh, really?
Yeah. So ultimately what you're looking, I guess where, what my question was going to be coming back after Dan had finished, but is kind of alluding to what Dan too was getting at, is when we talk about cost savings on it, I'm assuming the majority of the cost savings is in department heads not shuttling time cards down to the Town Hall, well, every other week or every week, every week in our case. And also the amount of time that the folks in the office are spending processing paperwork and doing data entry that they won't need to do because it's now all going to be in the system.
Exactly.
Do we have a rough idea of how much we think we end up cutting out on that?
That's a great question. We can put those numbers together and certainly come back. We don't have that estimated cost savings, but you did hit on two of the big ones. One, the direct cost savings from decreased mileage. Now, there'll still be reasons for department heads to visit the Town Hall, that is the hub for the satellite departments, and then the increased efficiency, which avails those employees to more responsible tasks than data entry for the input of the timesheet information.
The one other thing I'll bring up and suggest to you, I suggested super users on this, having the administrator of this is great, having each department head, potentially your super users, also be the people who are responsible for doing the edits for their own employees, becomes very important when, especially in the first six months of implementing a time and attendance program, because they know their employee schedules and they know if the person generally arrived later, came in earlier, stayed later. So it becomes difficult to have one person responsible and much better to train at the department level where the managers ultimately can override and make the adjustments to the town.
I'm assuming they would have to do that anyway, at least that would be the logical thing, I don't know.
It's very logical, yeah.
The same review process would exist and so the department heads or the manager would be responsible for reviewing and approving the timesheet and if there is an issue, you know, the Fire Department's a good example where irregular schedules, this would allow the department head to issue a correction or indicate a correction, bounce that back to the employee electronically, have their sign-off or submittal without delaying the processing of payroll.
The other place I would see is with the Police Department, if they get stuck out on an accident or someplace where you have folks who are on extended time beyond their normal shift, that may be a spot where you can quickly adjust compensation to re-fact dollars marked. Mr. Bailey?
I would, I would suggest that we also look at doing a policy because we want to avoid individuals helping their workmate out by covering from that way there. It has to be a strictly one-on-one person doing, they do it for themselves and nobody else.
That is where the fob for each individual becomes important.
It makes, it makes it easier to take care of and then with that individual, it is the Fire Department or if you had an emergency and the Highway Department was called to assist with an ambulance, it couldn't get up to certain dry weather, snow as we've known before, you know, we can have all that covered with it using the, whatever method we put into the instruction or the, how we wanted to go with the policy.
Any other commentary on this?
So with that in mind, does the board want to proceed with it or wait for more information at this point?
I think we should negotiate their first year contract.
And if I could follow up and we can certainly have a conversation and I can get some more details afterwards, is it the upfront cost or the annual maintenance cost that you don't feel is consistent with what you're familiar with?
The annual maintenance cost.
Right, and I think, so the, the annual maintenance cost just for electronic time and attendance is about $2,500 a year. The largest portion of that $6,700 is the data hosting. So that hosts all of our camp, accounting data in the cloud and so that's the larger portion. So is the $2,500 a year maintenance cost of electronic time and attendance still inconsistent with what you're familiar with?
The $2,500 doesn't surprise me at all. Paying, you have how many employees in the town?
This is for 150, this covers 150.
That's a lot of money to pay for, for software as a service, it's expensive, that's expensive.
$2,500 a year?
No.
Forty-two, twenty-five.
The forty-two, twenty-four, you're not, with 150 employees, that's not a lot of data that you're storing.
It's all of our accounting data, so all of, not just payroll, it's the town's entire accounting.
So you're moving the accounting system to SaaS? And you don't currently already do that?
So we, the software that we use for accounting service right now, Acufund, has two models. One, where you buy the software, which we have, and host the data on your own equipment, which is...
And that's what we're doing.
That's what we do right now. The, to maximize the functionality of electronic time and attendance, it makes the most sense to move to the second option, which is having the data hosted. So where we're no longer responsible for that data on our own servers, they're responsible for that data. So the 4,224 of that annual maintenance cost is the hosting fees, which for the amount of data and the security necessary to have that data hosted inside the United States and on their servers is relatively consistent. I think generally it's 75 cents a gigabyte is the benchmark used for hosted data in that space.
So part of what the software or the technology committee was doing was looking at utilization of the servers that we currently have, because we had already bought them, but also looking at cloud hosting there. Is this anything that we can tie into our cloud hosting that we're looking at elsewhere?
It's a good question and the major difference is the, so we have, all of our server information is backed up to the cloud. So if a catastrophic failure were to happen at any of our facilities, we have all of the data that's connected into our network is backed up in the cloud, including our accounting information.
Right.
The difference is with having the accounting data hosted through Acufund allows for remote access to that data. Right now, we don't have, we can't go into our accounting system offsite. The, anybody that uses the accounting system in town has to travel to the Town Hall to access that system. So having the, having the data hosted and through the employee portal, the web-based employee portal, we have the, that unlocks the functionality for remote access. I see your wheels spinning, so we've been working for about six months on different options and the most recent option was to set up a virtual desktop on our server, which has an annual cost of about $1,500 to have that functionality and access the data reliably from a remote endpoint.
Right, to do like a VPN where you would, you would log into your VPN, which would take you in through, I'll call it the backdoor, but it's not completely a backdoor, it's a secured, it's a secured portal into all your data.
So VPN is in a functionality that works with the accounting software for the security, so it would be a remote desktop essentially where the data that's being transmitted outside of the facility is just a screen image. So you're controlling a virtual machine within your network remotely and the only thing that's traveling over the airwaves is the, the screen image. So that is a function... So that is a functionality that we could pursue to access the, the data that's stored on our own servers. And certainly if we did move forward with electronic time and attendance, we'd probably pursue that $1,500 a year option for a virtual desktop. Again, the reason that, the reason that you're being presented with this option isn't to move our data into the cloud. What we have right now is working. But if we turn on electronic time and attendance, that functionality, which like person Hardikoff was talking about, where employees are able to access their historic tax information, pay information, that would also give department heads and staff the ability to access all of the town's financial information in the same place. And so the additional cost for that is that 4,224 a year.
I struggle with that one, because if we can do it for 1,500 out of, through this ultimately here, here alternate system with screenshotting it, gets you where you want to be, it just doesn't, doesn't give you that whipped cream to go with your pie.
Right. And like I said, so this is an ancillary benefit of moving in this direction. I wouldn't support moving to electronic time and attendance without the added functionality because basically all of that would do is create one, one system that employees could go to just clock in. No other data would be able to be accessed.
Right.
So certainly, you know, the, the other options that we considered were much more expensive for, and comprehensive for what we need and don't integrate into our financial program. So we could certainly go back and make more of a comprehensive presentation to the board why we chose this one above the other options. But the, to your point about why would we do this if, you know, we could solve that problem for 1,500, I guess I would just say is that's not the purpose of moving in this direction. The purpose of moving, moving in this direction is electronic time and attendance.
Is it worth just reaching out to the technology committee to see if there's an alternative method to get there that they may know of that we're not tapping into?
So again, if we're talking about electronic time and attendance, there won't be. If we're talking about the hosted data, there will be. But if we don't host the data with Accufund, the functionality is dramatically limited for the electronic time and attendance to the extent that I, I wouldn't recommend we do that. So I wouldn't recommend if we didn't have hosted data, and which is the reason it was presented this way, if we didn't have the hosted data, I wouldn't recommend using Accufund for electronic time and attendance. The, the functionality is drastically diminished at that point, on par with the other programs that are available to the town, where it doesn't tie into our accounting program. So it's two separate systems that we have to try to find a bridge for. So we could certainly have a discussion with the tech committee about how reasonable the hosted data portion of this is and certainly use that as an opportunity to negotiate. But again, that's not the primary purpose of the proposal. The primary purpose is to move towards electronic time and attendance.
So typically, like what's, the question to ask is what's hosted data typically cost? Or, I'm trying to think of like what's, how to phrase this appropriately. If I happen to be sending a message to a member of the technology committee, is, say, is $4,224 a reasonable annual cost for a, an organization's, hosting of an organization's entire accounting data?
Go ahead, Tracy.
Are you currently supplying the 150 employees with physical paychecks?
No.
Or direct deposit statements?
It's a, all of that is available to employees. We have an opt-out program if they want to receive their pay stub electronically. A majority do, but any employee that prefers a paper check or a paper statement receives one.
Okay. So we're not, we wouldn't be delivering any money in postage, is what I was thinking?
Typically those are delivered through departments and only mailed as necessary.
Okay.
I support the tech committee and too. The Accufund and stuff, in the past, in spreadsheets and applying data, is that technology great? Is it good now? I know it had issues in the past.
I would say that the transition to our current accounting software was not as smooth as most folks would have anticipated. But I have a high level of confidence in our finance office to utilize the program to its best abilities.
Is that, should we be looking into the future, a new software?
So it cost the town about $110,000 to transition, just to transition to this financial program. I have confidence that we can adequately use this program to serve the town's needs. Right now, I do not recommend or support pursuing another financial program, a different financial program.
The Accufund, is that the one we had problems in the past with? Or is it a different one?
So we've had Accufund since 2017.
Oh, yeah. There's, there's before then.
There was a pretty significant review process of that.
There was another program that was really bad that didn't produce any data at all. I think it was before then. So thanks for clarifying it.
Mr. Bailey?
Question, Dan. This is just my, when you talk about using this system, would you be able to put training and mileage in this? Would that, would that be something? I don't know. I'm just asking from my own knowledge. Is that something that program could do for us? For the employee if they went on for training or mileage?
To my information, it is not, to best my knowledge, there's not a functionality to do reimbursement requests through this program. There's an additional module, which we're not interested in at this time, for leave requests. Most of our departments are small enough that leave requests aren't a burden to the manager, where there would be increased efficiencies with submitting those electronically. But I'm not aware of a reimbursement request functionality.
Is there a smaller package? Right now, we talked about being 150 persons, individuals. Is that the minimum?
We would need the 150. We, we generally, in the summer months, grow to just shy of that.
Thank you.
Other comments?
Is it possible for a few of our departments that are funded via their own funding mechanisms, that they participate by covering the portion per rad a share for their total number of employees?
Via the revolving fund?
That would be a conversation that you could certainly broach with the appropriate fiduciary agent. And, you know, I think the, the expectation previously has been that the town covers the administrative functions of departments, whether it's paying bills, payroll, et cetera. The, I think the expectation would be for a department like Recreation, if they were to opt for a more efficient model like the $660 unit and the $3 key fobs, the expectation would be that that's something that their program fees would fund, that that additional, but the specific proportional share of the software from those departments.
Should stay with the town.
My understanding of status quo would be that's, would stay with the town. If it was the select board's intent to process that subject with the rec commission or others, we could do that.
Yeah. Other than negotiating your first year of your annual contract, because it only goes up, it never goes down. So if they'd like to wow you and you'd like to choose it, it would be great if they would, you know, offer you a 30% reduction or something first year out. And that way, if you do not keep the software because you've run into some barriers with it, or you find that it's not as functional as you thought it would be, at least you've had the chance to try it on for size.
So the general conversation was, I need much more information to give you an educated answer.
Very fair.
We're tabling it until we have more information.
Tabling it until next.
Okay.
Great. Moving right along, because we've got a young man, we gotta get moving out of here. Community development block grants, the Lee Oaks Cooperative. Tracy?
So has anyone, the community development block grant at the state level needs a support from within a county commissioner. Has anyone reached out to ask before you apply to CDFA for the CDBG at the state level? Has anyone asked for that support?
So any municipality is able to apply. So a county can apply, but a municipality, a town in Barrington can also apply. Does not require...
You do not require a county commissioner on it. Okay.
That is an avenue. So cert, there's two organizations in Barrington right now interested in CBD.
CDBG.
CDBG. It's a, generally a first come, first served for a community. The option for the other community is the, pursuing it through the county.
Okay. And have we reached out to George Hunton or Shelley Hatfield and asked them if the, if the Lee Oaks Cooperative would be a, a funding possibility?
So I've had conversations with Shelley Hatfield, the, the individual, generally the grant administrator that works through the application process. Step one is generally a, an income survey for the community. And based on the preliminary income survey, this community absolutely qualifies.
Okay.
Requires a majority of the population. Don't quote me, I think 75% of the population to be lower moderate income, based on federal standards. And so that is absolutely a part of the application process. And CDFA and Shelley Hatfield are, have been involved.
Okay, great.
Mr. Air?
Is this going in front of the voters, a series of public hearings?
There's public hearings, three public hearings consecutive scheduled for December 16th.
And it's not going in front of the voters? Side decision?
It, it is the select board's decision.
So we are cosigners though on this?
So yes. The, the town is the applicant, not even cosigners. The, the community would be the sub, sub-grantee of the C, Community Development Block Grant. The program is designed to expose the town's no liability. So there's the town, the town doesn't, the town isn't exposed to any liability through an award of a grant like this. A lien is placed on the property. Just the property is exposed to the liability of pursuit of the, a loan structured in this way.
So, but the payment's not made? Does it come back on us?
No.
All right.
George? So we, we are, the town is, will be completely, won't be liable for any of the monies whatsoever?
Correct.
And what about the, what's this new system's put in because they're providing a public water system? Who's responsible for training the individual to monitor that on a, on a daily basis to ensure that it's, it's working properly?
As a member-owned co-op, that would still be their responsibility. This is a, this is one funding source that's available to co-ops in this situation. They're pursuing other funding sources. The, the discussion on December 16th at the board level will certainly be the board's decision on whether or not there's support to move forward with this application. A decision can be made prior to that meeting. So the purpose of bringing it up now is to seek the board, any questions that the board has, request for additional information prior to that December 16th meeting.
So what was, we wouldn't have any responsibility with the monitoring of the water quality coming out of the ground?
Correct.
But we also, but we'd have the authority to have our health inspector look at that logging that they show for the testing of the water, the gallonage that they put up because they're providing a public water system in, in essence. So they have to follow the RSA for that.
My understanding is it doesn't cha, change the town's position whether there's a CDBG involved or not. But I can certainly follow up with additional information on what the town's responsibility is for monitoring the quality.
Thank you. Mr. Air?
The state supersedes all of us. That is, the state oversees all of them. And they have to make annual reports and stuff by licensed people.
Select person Hardikoff?
So if, if each of these homes were to drill their own well, this is, this, this particular upgrade to the well system is running $14,492 per home. Wouldn't it be cheaper for each of the homes to possibly explore putting in their own wells?
My guess is the density would support that. That's just a guess. I do know that the folks involved from the leadership of the co-op have engaged the services of qualified engineers to develop a plan that's suitable for their community. I would imagine if there was a more cost-effective option, they would be pursuing it as a member-owned community.
Mr. Air?
The state looks at the lot, the loading of the lot, and then they draw septic and stuff, so that calculates everything. So someone could put a well in every single one. And then the, I think part of the grants for septic too. And then the infrastructure are paid for. So that's why it's, the prices are up, Tracy. So I...
Oh, it's septic as well?
Correct.
Well and septic related to content.
And then you have all pipes and all cups to every house?
Okay.
You're essentially building this, a POTW on property.
Where is this? Is this across from...
Liberty Truck.
Yeah.
So it used to be on the side. Now it's called, okay. Oh, that's good. Yeah. Okay.
You're building a POTW. That's the best way to put it.
Mr. Bailey?
Just one question now that I know the exact location. Is it, is all of their property in Barrington?
My understanding it is, but I, I don't know for sure. I know that there's undeveloped portions, there's undeveloped portions of this property that the, the plans were originally to expand it. I don't think that's an option right now. But I can certainly check if historically any other property is owned.
I do think there's a plan to expand in the back part of the park.
Because in the lead.
Yeah. And the other, the other thing is, I think this was the park, if I understand correctly, that had concern about the Hard Rock project and the effects that it would have on their well water. So my thoughts in conjunction with the hydrology study that's taking place and the required work that will be done there, if this is done in the next year, it will be interesting timing in conjunction with some of the work that will be being done very close to that, should the hydrology study come back appropriate to continue work up there. So how long have they known that they've had well and septic failure?
That's not clear to me. My understanding is shortly after the member-owned co-op bought out the corporation, they encountered, they started encountering the problems and started working on a possible solution. The, like I said, they've engaged the services of qualified consultants to help work them through the process, to include pursuing a variety of funding sources. The New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, I think it's the SRF loan, which I think is Shared Revenue Fund. There's a million dollar, they are at the, the highest priority in the state for a million dollars from that fund as a, it's structured as a loan, but I understand that there's a, a portion of principal that is eligible to be forgiven. So this is, they've been checking all of the right boxes, pursuing solutions for this problem, including a variety of funding sources. And the project has been, like I said, I think there's, last time I saw, I think there was 50 some odd projects on that DES SRF funding source. And they were, it's based on priority, based on the, the need for each project. And they were number one on the list. So like I said, I think they've done everything that they can. And they've been working on it since the members have owned the community.
Mr. Air?
They have identified the flow of water for the hydro things up, for the flow to the valley and Oyster River and stuff. And then the state is, knows well this. And this has been ongoing for a while. This isn't, this happened yesterday. They've issued this up, they've had a lot to work on it.
Yeah.
And the state knows well everything that's going on.
My, my concern was just simply that I, I, if, if Hard Rock's hydrology study comes back and DES approves that project, I did not want that project to be implicated in any way for the failure of the water and septic on that property. So I think it's important that we are very, very aware of how far back this problem has been identified long before any potential work to adjacent properties. I will say this, CDBG funding is an excellent source of helping with housing for low, extremely low and moderately low households. So I'm hoping as we explore it, that it becomes a possibility.
Mr. Bailey?
The only other last question I have is when they, if and when it is approved and we're having the project is underway, are they going to use that money for temporary services for the areas that they're going to start replacing the systems at? Who is going to be responsible for the temporary service? Does it come out of the money that they got into the grants? Or is it something else that we're going to have to be worried about? And how much are we going to have to put into for the inspection? And how much are we going to have to put into for the inspections of the property, and we're going to have to waive any, any monies that we would normally get? So that'd be questions I would ask. What is our responsibility going to be for the inspections also?
So I have your question on our responsibilities for the inspections. As far as what the money's used for, I think if your question was, will how the money's used cost the town any more money? And by, my understanding of the situation, absolutely not. There's, there's no cost and there's no liability to the town. The, the town, if the town does incur any costs, up to $25,000, they're reimbursable. My understanding in talking to managers and other communities that are considered receiver communities for the CDBG, meaning that they, their community has been identified as having a large enough population to regularly receive these funds. They don't, if they do incur any costs, they don't even put in for them because the costs are so insignificant. But certainly if the town were to incur any costs, they are reimbursable from those funds up to $25,000.
Mr. Air?
I think I end up envisioning now, we're more visual we're coming forward.
Great. And there are two plans that the, that would need to be adopted if the select board supported moving forward with an application. Those plans will be before the planning board at their December 3rd meeting, simply for comment as a courtesy to have their review, and so certainly we might have some additional input from the planning board at our December 16th meeting.
My comment on it is, in general, I'm in support of moving forward with this item because as we talk about it, this, this is helping build a system that better supports the people who are less served in our community from the standpoint that they do not have the same socioeconomic status as everybody. So clean drinking water and waste management are extremely important, and if it's the less affluent end of the town that needs it, I support helping get them the infrastructure that they need to be safe and secure.
Very well put, Mr. Chairman.
Great, so I will have that additional information, and certainly if the board has any additional questions prior to the December 16th meeting, let me know ahead of time. The, the grant administrator who will be applying on behalf of the community will be present for that meeting, and the, like I said, there'll be three consecutive public hearings, which I understand shouldn't take any more than 15 minutes. And if at that time there's board support to move forward, it would require board action and the adoption of those two plans, which I referenced earlier.
Alright, moving on.
Great.
Good. Winter contract, two-week minimum discussion. I have already submitted my questions that I had to Connor and general information, I don't know what else anybody has in general, or general information that they'd like to get on the table before Connor elaborates on. Mr. Air?
Years ago, I showed support, actually I talked to John Scruton, and then the ex-road agent, and then the need of doing this to scare our winter maintenance vendors. Only thing that came out of it was extra $10 an hour to do the rate, but that's what, at least time, and I brought up before and as a whole time, take a good look at it. Thank you.
So just briefly, for the benefit of the community, the road agent has been working on a proposal, and him and I discussed at length, an opportunity to offer a similar program that the Department of Transportation offers to their outside contractors, which would be a two-week minimum of 10 hours for a 20-week period from mid-November through late March, early April, which would allow the winter contractors a guaranteed payment of 10 hours, whether there were a 10-hour weather event in that two-week period or not. And the intention of that is really, as select person Air mentioned, to offer some security to the winter contractors, which are a very important part of the puzzle that we have in Barrington, both working with our highway department and the outside contractors, to cover things like their insurance expenses and the equipment that they have, registration and whatnot. So this proposal certainly isn't anticipated to cost the town more money, but is an opportunity to offer security to our winter contractors, similar to how the state does and other communities do, by having a 10-hour minimum over a two-week period for 20 weeks from November through late March, early April. In the information in response to select person NAP's questions, Chairperson NAP's questions, the handout you have that was delivered today shows on the second page a graph which tries to demonstrate where weather events typically fall over the winter months. So what you'll see is there's generally irregularity on when those events fall, but the, over the two years reviewed, there would be about two, two-week periods where the winter contractors on average were used less than the 10 hours within the two-week period. So like I said, it isn't intended to cost the town more money, but to offer safety, or after, offer some stability and security to our winter contractors.
General thoughts?
Honestly, if we know it's only happened twice, it seems like we're creating a program that may not be required if it only has occurred twice.
So the, the practices, the winter maintenance practices pursued by the new road agent may vary from how winter contractors were dispatched previously, and it's important that the winter contractors have, if you know, they're signing on and going through what they need to, to be a winter contractor for the town, that they recognize that they're an important piece of the puzzle and have at least a minimum guarantee for that 20-week period. So the, the graph that you see would show the winter contractor utilization may look very few, very different this winter and in winters in the future. And this is a strategy that we are proposing to employ, again, to recognize the value that the contractors bring to our winter maintenance model.
Mr. Air?
Well, times have changed, it's up, cost of registered vehicle, tires, fuel, maintenance, print of maintenance and stuff, and then insurance, everything has changed. And so, so I've worked for, I have visited other towns and stuff, I spend, cost me money to bid the town, and I gotta fill a stack of papers like that, co-insured this, co-insured that, blood here, blood there, and they never call me. I waste so much time, if I keep a, me too. Fire police, part of the job, they're on call. But as a snow vendor, you're on call. You sign a contract, sign up a truck, you're liable from December to April, whatever the contract is. So you have to make a decision about your family, when you go out and stuff, will you go on a trip, or make snow, can they, I can't do that. I don't drink personally, but then someone has to make a decision. Jeez, can I have a drink with a friend? Or am I gonna call tonight? You don't know. You have to, you have to make a personal, you have to make a big commitment for winter maintenance. And it's, there's a cost involved for that.
So the guarantee equates to $31,000?
Correct.
That most likely out of the weeks that are occurring in here, which is 20 or 22 weeks?
20.
20 weeks, that only 10% of that is actually being compensated in a way where we potentially would not use them.
Correct.
The past two years indicate that 18 out of 20 times, we would have used them, the 10-hour minimum.
Correct.
So truly, the only variance that we're talking about is likely a guarantee of $3,100.
Again, assuming the same utilization of contracts previous years.
Sure.
Correct. That math is correct.
So then it would be very easy, based on that, to approve this policy, understanding that the true variance over the past two winters is not $31,000, but only $3,100. Okay?
That's a great point.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
Thank you very much. Total, I just looked at, total amount of money, the budget currently is $133,000. So my question to you is, is if the middle of December, it snows between two two-week periods, does that, and they go off and they work more than two hours plowing on each one of those timeframes, does the, this program, winter compensation cease to exist, so they get paid for the two hours they plow without the winter compensation? Or do they get the winter compensation plus the two hours?
It's a great question. Chairperson NAP had the same question. So it's a, it's a minimum threshold, so...
It's a guaranteed minimum.
Guaranteed minimum. So if a, if the contractors worked four hours in a two-week period, they would be compensated eight hours. If they worked 10 hours in a two-week period, they would be compensated 10 hours. So the, whatever they work up to eight hours, they would be compensated eight hours. Zero to eight hours in a two-week period, compensated eight hours. Eight hours or more, it's just straight time. The eight hours, the guaranteed minimum is not in addition to what they actually work.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
This is the part I wanted to know, yeah.
It's a good question.
Looking for a motion?
Yeah, I'm looking for a motion.
Okay.
I want to make sure we have a discussion before I went.
I would make a motion to approve the guaranteed winter maintenance contractor policy.
Seconded by Mr. Air.
Air, aye.
Bailey, aye.
Hatch, nay, and the reason being, I think this needs to be looked at again. Are you telling me that there's only one ton plow sander that's used in the town of Barrington in the winter? I find that very odd.
For the winter of 2019 into 2020, there's only one, one-ton contractor offering the services to town Barrington.
We need to ask for that.
Do you vote?
Yeah. Harko, aye.
Yeah, aye.
Truck on.
Alright. General information, anything else we need to add, or we're already, we're still in November, so work anniversaries are covered?
Correct.
Which leaves us with select persons' reports. Mr. Air?
I attended the conservation and stuff, and I thought someone might show up, but basically, we talked about the porch plan and stuff, they want, they had a better understanding of what was happening and stuff, with the TA showing up and stuff, and then we talked a little bit about the dams and stuff, and they allowed $10,000 paid to the dam study, but they wasted more information. And then we had, this is, we talked a little bit, the site, and then the, they're gonna walk that property up into Stratford, well, a little bit's in Barrington, most of it's in Stratford. And then Town Lands has not met since the meeting with Conservation.
That's it. Mr. Bailey?
Thank you. I went to the library meeting, and they discussed how they were going to do the evaluation of all the employees, and then they asked me to leave so I didn't have to worry about any information they talked about. Other than that, they just talked about the attendance and how many people were using it, it was quite high and what have you, and just about all I have to say, but they were, it's all there, thank you. Nothing, nothing really. They talked about their events coming up, which I don't have the copy of, I'm sitting home on that coffee table I was gonna bring with me, but, so I didn't bring either one. Sorry for that, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody is welcome to submit a gingerbread house measuring 12 inches by 12 inches by 18 inches, deliver them to the library between December 7th and 11th, for voting between December 12th and someday after December 12th. Date uncertain.
There was a zoning board meeting, the garage was pulled back, it was decided it was, they
could make it closer to the house and keep the 30 by 30, which they wanted. And then there was a variance granted for a Moshe pole mount on 507 McDowell Shore Drive, that was granted, and one for steps on the front of a house which were three feet into the setback. So they, they had redesigned it and tried to make it conform as much as possible, and the members thought they had done it the best they could do, so. So that was it.
Select person, Harko. So the last meeting of the Recreation Commission took place at the same time as a select board meeting, so I was not in attendance, I will not be in attendance at the December 16th meeting of the Recreation Commission, but I will ask that under right-to-know the past three meeting minutes be approved and posted on our website, they are currently missing. And that would have allowed me to give you an update, because I would have reviewed them.
I'm making a motion that when we're done with this year, that we change Tracy off the Recreation Commission meeting, because she never gets to go to any meetings, so I don't know.
I know.
The planning board meeting, I actually came into to tell them that I wasn't going to be able to stay because I had a truck at work, so I was offloading waste, or not offloading, I was loading waste to leave site, or helping with all of that. But their meeting was focused around the first public hearing for the zoning amendment of the solar ordinance, that we're looking at adopting, which I can tell you, has been over a year in the making to get, get it drafted, get it written, get it reviewed, make sure that it met our intent. So there's been a lot of effort that's gone into it. And then cases before the board on December 3rd right now are TurboCam and Wildlife Encounters. And that is all I have. Final public comment?
Remember, I gotta catch up for three years, I've been, listen everybody. Well, Dan, I want to thank you, it's Thanksgiving week, and people don't realize, but Sarah Jessica Hale's family is buried in a cemetery at the top of Route 9 and 202. She lobbied Abraham Lincoln for Thanksgiving. Did you know that? Probably, a lot of people don't. So maybe we ought to talk turkey at 300, yeah. Couple of questions, maybe to take back to the tech committee, on the, on the software. I guess what function would be lost if we were to host it or find another hosting company? Two, do we have the HIPAA function in the SharePoint program? Andy, did we go with that option? The HIPAA function? Where actually protect the personnel, police, fire?
From the standpoint of...
Remember the software, there was a software option in the SharePoint where it had a HIPAA function to it? Did we ever go with that function? I was off the committee by then, but...
No, well HIPAA is gonna be around preservation of personal information.
Yes.
And everything, our servers are, are fairly well locked down and controlled, but also I think every, all the personal information is...
So the town pursues the government licensing for Office 365, which is protected and compliant with HIPAA and other record preservation requirements. The, the one aspect of Office 365 which the state has not signed on to yet is Siege's compliance, so on a state-by-state basis, states need to approve handling of police records, police information, and so all of the surrounding communities in most, or states in most in the country have adopted the government licensing for Office 365 as compliant, but because it requires an active decision by each state to list a program as Siege's compliant, New Hampshire hasn't, and so the Office 365 is not Siege's compliant by state standards. The town of Barrington worked with... The town of Barrington worked with a number of other communities, including the city of Rochester, to author a letter requesting SEGA's compliance for Office 365.
There is a new CIO for the state of New Hampshire, so he's more, he's techie. The reason why I'm asking is SharePoint, Microsoft could actually do the hosting for us if we already have a SharePoint through the, the server and then the cloud based. AWS has, they're at four or seven cents a terabyte, so I think the cost could definitely be lower than what the hosting costs are.
Those were the questions I was, I was getting into here, but I, without, actually the response I got back was, can you take a call right now? And I was like, ah, this is probably not the best time right now.
Right, right, right. The other thing with the reader aspect of it, if we're gonna go to a new town hall, I mean, are you gonna be able to take those readers with? And then two, is there an app function? Because if the town employees have the app on their phone, NFC, if anybody knows what NFC is, near field communication, they don't even need, be near the reader. They could just walk in and the reader would read their phone that they're on the clock. So there's some technology things that are out there, but I would look at an app function for the town employees instead of going on their computer. Can they do it on the phone?
Tracy, do you have something?
I just wanted to share, and there's often this misunderstanding. As an employer, the municipality has the responsibility to protect privacy of the employees. But because treatment, payment and operations for any healthcare is not taking place within the municipal government, the Health Information Protection Portability Act does not necessarily apply to everything that is done. The only piece that could possibly have HIPAA applied to it from a municipal employer standpoint is if in fact, we were somehow paying portions of the actual healthcare bill on behalf of the employees, and I don't think we'd do that. Is that correct? So the only protection of health information that's required would be, for instance, for a requested FMLA leave. And at that point, requesting a doctor's note, you would, under the Privacy Act, protect that person's information.
And there may be some other component to rec and the ambulance and things like that.
Yes, but we get nervous when we talk about HIPAA, and so I always think it's important that we rein it back in when it comes to.
Well, and that was my concern with security, and then you're obviously having people's personal information. A couple of other things, back to the Lee Oak cooperation there. The arsenic levels are actually changing, I believe, on January 1st, so they're actually getting tighter, so I'm sure the DES is aware of that. Whoever has contact with the Lee Oak is, they, there's a workshop every quarter at the Community Development, so those folks can actually go as well, and they'll actually kind of coach these folks how to write grants. So there's an opportunity there for them. Things haven't changed in three years. Can the rec department, it sounds like it's the same situation, the rec department has their meetings on Monday nights, same nights as the selectmen. You know, Casey had the same situation. He'd have to be here or there. Back to a little bit of lobbying, can you see if they can alternate their meetings every other Monday from the selectmen's meeting?
They all, they are alternating. The select board is in an increased schedule through the budget process, so through the two months of the budget process, the select board typically meets every Monday, which throws off the, every other schedule. But through the majority of the year, they are, are alternated.
Point out, it is more than two months of budget process.
I'd point it out, too.
Then last thing, plowing, what's the DOT requirements, no more than 14 hours? So you guys are talking about eight hours or 10 hours, and we get a storm, and some guys want to work overtime, or they want to work so many hours?
Dan?
There's not really a set schedule. Certain unions have a set schedules for their employees. It's union. And then when it comes to DOT, I don't know offhand what their hours are, but they're union, they have a set hours by the union.
Okay, that's it. Any other public comments?
He can be sworn into town birth office, by a wonderful town clerk.
Do you think you could authorize the purchase of a new clock or a room?
For less than $10,000 idea?
I can take it with us.
Is it just a battery?
We've already tried that.
Okay, so time to buy a clock.
Realize the government turns slow.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Somebody put in for that. Let's vote.
Okay.
No need for a non-public.
No need for a non-public. Good to hear. Any final comments from the board? Motion to adjourn? Caping, Connor?
I failed to say that I hadn't attended the Michael.
I didn't talk yet to the bus driver.
I didn't attend the school board meeting because I thought of it in the middle of the night, and my family had taken me out for my birthday, and the governor's in, and somehow that seemed to sound a little bit better than the school board.
Good for you. Seconded on the motion to adjourn.
All right. Napp, I.
Harder cop, bye.
Patch, I.
Bailey, I.
Air, I.
Thank you all.
Thank you for coming.